Good evening, everybody. Welcome to this September 14th Select Board meeting. We'll call the meeting to order. And as usual, I'll read our public participation policy. The Hatfield Select Board welcomes everyone to its meetings and all other public meetings of the Town of Hatfield.
All meetings of the Town of Hatfield?
All regular and special meetings of the boards and committees of the Town of Hatfield shall be open to the public and shall conform to the open-meeting law. Executive sessions are closed to the public and will be held only as prescribed by the statutes of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It is important to recognize that the open-meeting law affords the opportunity to listen to the proceedings but not necessarily participate. During meetings of the Select Board, an attempt will be made to find a balance between hearing from members of the community and conducting the required business of the Hatfield Select Board. Next, we always, as always, we have announcements. Ed, did you have anything?
I don't have any announcements, no.
No announcements. Brian, did you have anything?
I do not, thank you.
I guess I would just say, you know, school is in full swing. Things seem to be going very well. I know Ed had a nice reminder last time about, you know, being watchful for school buses and everything, which is great. And I just want to say, it seems like our three fall sports teams are off to a great start. So that's kind of exciting. Girls soccer, boys soccer, and field hockey. So feels nice.
That would be it.
Fall's a very nice time.
Fall is a nice time. And I hope everybody took some time to commemorate the 20th anniversary of 9/11.
Hard to believe.
It is hard to believe. I was on the board when that happened and last time. But anyway, I hope everybody took time to commemorate that. So our first order of business is the approval of some minutes.
I won't make, excuse me, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the August 17th, 2021 meeting.
Second.
A motion's made in second. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You know what? I completely skipped over it by accident. I don't know if anyone's here or not, but I just thought I'd...
No, thank you for that because I did skip over it. Is anyone here for public forum? Kathy, would you like to approach the mic? Sorry about that.
Okay. Kathy Gao, Depot Road. I actually have a statement to read for myself and also I've been asked to read a statement by Bob Wagner, Chair of the Community Preservation Committee. Both of these are in reference to the last item on your agenda tonight, assuming you get there, which was, I guess, a continuation of the discussion of the use of the second floor of Town Hall for the Historical Museum. So this is a statement that Bob Wagner wrote. He could not be here this evening, so he asked that somebody be able to read it. So I understand, this is from Bob Wagner, speaking as Bob Wagner. I understand that the Select Board will have a discussion of Town Hall use and the Historical Museum on its agenda for September 14th. Community Preservation Act grants have made significant investments in the town's historical collection through professional cataloging, documentation, and attestation and restoration. This work over the last 10 years has brought Hatfield's rich history to the fore in popular public displays and programs, media articles, and professional recognition. The museum collection needs and deserves a permanent accessible home. To this end, at a minimum, the collection requires an ongoing storage location that is climate-appropriate and accessible by museum staff. Previous Select Boards endorsed the installation of the Historical Collection on the second floor of Town Hall. Community Preservation Act grants awarded for handicapped accessible improvements to Town Hall were based on this vision, with accessibility to the second floor for the museum collection being central to the grant proposals submitted by the town for this funding. Housing the museum collection in Town Hall will solve the immediate needs for a secure storage location, provide the collection with a permanent publicly accessible home, and fulfill the requirements of the CPA grants awarded for this purpose. Thank you, Robert Wagner, Chair, Community Preservation Commission.
Thank you, Kathy.
Now, speaking as myself, Kathy Gao, curator of the Historical Museum, which for anyone who doesn't know, the Hatfields' two museums are owned by the Town of Hatfield and managed by the Hatfield Historical Society, which is different than the Hatfield Historical Commission. So speaking for the Hatfield Historical Society, we were just going to ask that unless your discussion at the end of today's meeting basically decides that the second floor of the Town Hall is the best, you know, long-term storage solution for the Historical Museum at this time, we would request that the subcommittee that was convened last year be reconvened, not to just discuss, but to determine what would be the best accessible and safe location for the long-term storage of the Hatfield Historical Museum, which for the past 10 years has been in the second floor of the Town Hall and only stopped because the Town Hall was being renovated and we were asked to move out. So anyway, that's my statement. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Kathy.
All right. Go ahead.
I just wanted to say something regarding the topics on the agenda. So, you know, I take responsibility for the topic to discuss Town Hall needs. It's sort of misleading. It does reference the museum, but really that topic is for the board to have a discussion regarding the town's needs for use of Town Hall.
Which, and all of that is part of this. It's all part of it. And so I wasn't expecting we'd be making any decisions. And I guess I was under the impression that after we had a meeting, what, three or four weeks ago, I thought that that working group was going to be reconvened.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. It will be.
Okay. And it's my impression that that group will make a recommendation maybe to the board but not make a determination about the final...
Right.
Okay.
So I thought the Select Board was the one who had to convene that subcommittee, so I don't think anything happened because...
No, it's just a matter of coordinate setting up that group, scheduling that group to meet.
Yeah, we definitely should do that. But I, yeah, but I think, yes, we weren't expecting, I wasn't expecting to have a discussion about necessarily the museum tonight, but about...
That's correct. No.
Everything in general.
And that's what I'm saying, that was...
It's all part of such a, as you know, Kathy, a larger discussion, right?
Is that something that we could maybe, and I'm sure Kathy's thinking this as well, like some sort of a timeframe that we can get the ball rolling to maybe by October 1st or like in the next couple of weeks to have the first reconvening of the committee so that we can get the ball rolling?
That's, you're on that, right?
That was with Kathy, Ed from the Select Board, Amy Hahn from Historical Commission, Bob Wagner sort of, and then Bob and three.
Right, just to check schedules and let's get, you know, we can start having...
Definitely, let's get it moving. I thought we would be doing that. We did talk about that at the last meeting.
And I know there's a lot going on.
Yeah.
It's important.
Yes, we do intend to do that.
Okay. And we'll watch the meeting and see what happens at the end of tonight's meeting?
Sure.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so anyone else for public forum? No. Is anyone joining us maybe online for public forum?
Not for public forum.
Okay.
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Brenna Duquette.
I know, I see Brenna, but she's on the agenda.
Yeah. And she has a board meeting this evening at 6:00 tonight, so the board can...
Oh, so, that's fine. We should be fine. Where did Bob go?
He's...
Oh. I just couldn't see you because you were hiding behind Karen. So our first order of posted business is a visit from Chief Flaherty, who comes with good news. Bob?
I do have some good news. So last Wednesday, we received a phone call from Senator Warren's office advising the Town of Hatfield that we awarded an assistance to firefighters grant. I submitted the grant back in January and it goes through a lengthy process of some computer tabulations and then having peer review, that they look at it. Because of some of the restrictions, it took a little bit longer to get through the process. The system that they award them through kind of failed for about six weeks, so the government had to fix the program. But we did get awarded $161,238.10 that will be used to buy communications equipment for the fire department. It's kind of a longstanding project. It's been on Capitol for a few years. And because our equipment is aging, the radio that I wear every day is actually about 22 years old. Normal life expectancy is about 12 to 15. So this is going to help upgrade the entire department. It's also going to give us multiple bandwidth to talk to our mutual aid partners and be able to talk to our cops, which we currently don't have that ability to hear them or anything like that. So this is, it's about half of what I originally put in for, but the government has the ability and when they're doing their process to adjust. So we did lose a little bit of money out of it, but the project will still be able to move forward due to the grant and also due to the funds that were approved at this year's town meeting. So it's good news. It's not going to cost the taxpayers as much money. So this is, this is good. This is the third time that I've submitted this grant, and there was over 8,100 applications nationwide, so it's very, very competitive.
A great job, Chief.
That's, that is really big money. That's a lot of money.
It is.
To do a very worthwhile project. People who watch the meetings regularly or go to town meeting know that there was, you know, our radios would have been rendered obsolete, right? That's very soon because of...
Yes.
And so, you know, this is, it's a, it's a safety issue, right, for our firefighters. And there's a police component, too.
So the police actually, I think he was going to be putting a letter together. He had actually received a couple of different grants from this one. This one's specific to firefighters nationwide. He got some at the state level that he's actually going to be able to use to purchase some of the radios that were also approved at town meeting. So in the end, we will not be using all of the funds that were appropriated in May, so I'm happy to report we will be returning some funds to the town.
That is really great.
The fire and police, I know that already from talking to Chief DeKochak.
Right. That's really great. And it's certainly comforting to know that the communications will be functioning better, both within our department and with our neighboring communities and our mutual aid partners. So really, great job. I also know from talking to Bob when he was working on this, this was a big chunk of work to put together. This was a difficult grant application, and he mentioned the competitive nature. So it's really here to be commended, Bob. Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
The 8,100 that originally went in, it gets down once it goes through, so into the peer review process, which is really kind of the final stage, that's actually only 1,500 total made it to the peer review stage nationwide. The rest of them were all cut out due to other technical glitches or they just didn't qualify. So it's a, it's a small pool that we were able to make it through. And they're actually down to, this was round eight, and they're only expecting 10 rounds this fiscal year, because the federal fiscal year obviously ends in a couple of weeks.
Well...
I was very happy to get this news last week.
As were we. As were we. So congrats, Bob. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Is there a timeframe as to when the funds will be available to expend?
So I actually, once I got the award announcement officially in the email on Friday morning, I had the email a few minutes after 7:00, and by quarter after 8:00, I had already gone into the system and accepted the award. Their actual, the original data performance was actually effective as of September 6th, and we have two years to work on it. I've already been in re-contact with our vendor. We are actually setting up a meeting probably within the next day or two. He's going to come out, or he's going to fine-tune some things. They already knew what we were planning, so I expect the order to probably go in no later than next week, and six to eight weeks for delivery, and then maybe another two to three weeks to do a couple of other things dealing with the state and getting them programmed, and then we'll do an in-service. So I would see that we definitely will be in service probably within about 12 weeks from today.
And do they release the funds right away?
Yes. Once, once we go through and submit it, I need all the paperwork, I need all the...
Oh, so we buy them? Okay.
And it is reimbursed.
It's reimbursable.
But everything is actually done through this new, now it's a two-year-old FEMA Go platform.
Yep.
So it should be relatively quick because of the process. So I would assume that if we get the whole project up and completed before December, I can't imagine that we probably won't go more than about February at the latest to get the monies reimbursed.
Right.
No supply chain issues with this type of equipment at this point?
Nope. I actually, I talked to the, our sales rep at Pittsfield Communication again today, and we had a couple of things we had to iron out. And he is, he's telling me that Motorola is still saying six to eight weeks is their lead time. And that was the same timeframe that I had earlier this year when I spoke to him. So things still seem to be on track. And then we just have to go through a couple of things at the state level because we have radio ID identifiers that they have to issue and a couple of technical things, but shouldn't really take all that long. Yeah, a bunch of it's already in the works, so it should be relatively simple.
Excellent.
Well, congratulations again. Nice job.
Congratulations to you.
Another important thing that the town should know is not only do our departments heads work hard for the Town of Hatfield, but all of them are always looking for grants and to pursue it. And so many of them gotten grants over the years, and they saved the town a lot of money. So I just want to mention that so people are aware that all the departments are working hard, looking for grants.
Right. There's three excellent grant-getters right in this room. Actually, Lydia's had it. You've been able to get some grants as well. And I can tell you as somebody who writes grants and then does the administration and reporting work afterwards, it's a huge amount of work. It really is a lot of work, so...
I think this will be my fifth grant since I took over. The same day, actually, we got notified that we got approved for the next fiscal year's Emergency Management Preparedness Grant, so that's another $2,700. And then there's another grant that's actually, will be coming due again in January, which should be another $10,000 that will be going towards the fire department. It's a non-competitive grant, but you still have to do the paperwork.
Yeah, there's always, and it's a lot. I think people who don't write grants or, you know, then do the reporting on them probably don't have any idea, but it can be really like pulling your hair out kind of stuff, so...
Very beneficial, though. It's helped us, as the fire department, the grants that I've gotten so far, it's helped us tremendously with a lot of things that we were, not necessarily behind on, but it could have put the town a little bit more on the hook for a few dollars, and we were able to do a lot of these projects and really no cost to the taxpayers for the most part, so.
Excellent. Bob, thank you. Thank you very much. Congrats to you and your department. So I do want to get to our next agenda item fairly quickly because Brenna Duquette from the Housing Authority is joining us. Brenna is online. Do you have a camera, Brenna?
Unfortunately, I'm having camera difficulties, so I do apologize.
Okay, that's okay. But we want to be respectful of the fact that you have a meeting at 6:00. So I just, I had asked Marlene to see if you could join us on the, for the meeting tonight because, you know, there's been a lot of activity over at Kapewong. The project looked like, looks like it's coming along really, really nicely. I just thought it might be nice for an update for townspeople on it since, you know, they've been, you know, watching our meetings as this project was, you know, conceptualized and, you know, as it moved forward. So we'd like to hear from you about all of that.
Yeah, absolutely. And thank you for inviting me. We are very excited that this project is coming to an end, and it's been, like you said, many, many years in the works before I even took over this Housing Authority. So it's exciting to see the finish line. As of yesterday, we did the final walkthrough and we have the final punch list. So it should be completed two weeks. And that is just with the installation of the crosswalk signs. We're just waiting for them to come in and so they can be installed. But everything else is wrapping up. We were behind schedule, and I'm sure everyone noticed that it was taking a little longer than anticipated. And that was just due to some unforeseen, when, you know, when you start a project, you don't know what you're going to run into. So it was no fault of the construction company, but just some unforeseen things, hiccups, I will say, that prolonged it just a bit. The original date for the asphalt was August 5th, so it finally came to fruition last Friday. So was about a month behind, but the residents were very forgiving, I'll say. And I appreciate, you know, the town working with us and kind of giving us some leeway on the parking situation. So thank you for that.
It looks really nice. I haven't, I didn't notice, are the lines painted yet or will that be later?
They are painted, yes.
They are?
They were painted as of Friday as well, so it's, it's very exciting. So really, we're just, it's small details. We need to plant some trees, of course, put our benches back, the crosswalk signals, but all the important things are done.
Excellent.
And it's important now the residents can park back in their spots, which I know they were looking forward to.
Yeah, I think it'll be great, especially as, you know, I mean, we know winter's coming. I don't want to, I know nobody wants to hear that, but it is coming, and it'd be nice to have that all done and have those extra spots over there, you know, so that more, more residents can park. And then I, you know, I'm sure you'll work with the residents there on the location of the trees and the benches, because that was something that was really important to them as this project got underway, so...
Absolutely. They've already had their first tenant meeting, and that was something that was brought up and something both myself and my board are really taking into account what, what they're interested in and where they want it. And yeah, that's very important, and it's been important to the residents from the beginning, so...
Right, exactly. Okay, Brenna, thank you so much. Did either of you have any questions for Brenna?
No questions, just I think it looks great as a person walks by.
It looks nice, and they're numbered. Each of the parking spots have a number, so...
I didn't even notice that. I just came right by. You know, I meant to look, and I guess I must have forgot.
And not only, in the parking lot itself, which was the crux of this whole project, it's just going to be safer now for the residents just getting in and out of their cars. I mean, that, right? The parking lot had been in rough shape prior to this, so it was nice that Brenna and Kapewong were able to secure that grant to take care of it.
Well, and it means that there's more residents that can actually park in the lot, which means less crossing the street.
Yep.
Which is, you know, to me, which was one of the best, you know, benefits of this project. So, and of, that was a project also done with grants.
Yes.
Yeah. So Brenna, thank you very much.
Thanks, Brenna.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. And pass our thanks on to your, to your board as well.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so our topic three is a report, a COVID-19 report from our COVID coordinator, Claudia Sardi. I don't see Claudia here. Is Claudia here? No.
I don't believe so.
Okay, well, if she, that's disappointing. If she shows up, we'll maybe try to backtrack a little bit.
May I make a comment?
Yes.
So as the residents over the last couple of weeks have started receiving the phone calls, you know, the Monday updates from Chief Flaherty, you know, just where we stand with the coronavirus and what, what's unfolding in the town. So it's nice to see that last night's call was, was only one new case. So hopefully that's a trend that we're kind of had a little peak, and now we're heading downwards. So, but we're going to continue with those calls on a go-forward basis, you know, till, till we feel that it's no longer necessary, so...
There's only one active case as of today.
Great.
Right. Yeah, that was one thing I was hoping to discuss with Claudia, because it's, the calls, mine, when, if they go to my machine for some reason, my voicemail and my cellphone, and I know it's my phone, it's not the code red, it cuts off the beginning of, so I never hear the number of cases. But I would like to hear, you know, we, we used to have the number of cases and the number that were released from quarantine, and then the total number of cases we've had as a town. So I'd like to see that added in there, but if Claudia comes, we'll, we'll address that.
And there is a weekly statement that's posted on the town's website.
It's posted, right.
And Facebook, I believe.
Right.
So if anybody's interested in seeing that.
Right. Right, there is different ways to get the information.
That's posted on every Monday.
Right.
And also, if I may, so was Claudia invited to tonight's meeting? She got a separate email? Okay, I just want to, you know, be fair and make sure that, yeah, she knew about it.
Yeah, I mean, this is...
I know sometimes there's a conflict on her end.
Yeah, we've had conversations.
Okay, that's fine. I just wanted to, you know, make sure.
This has happened, this is not the first time.
Wow.
Leave it at that. So our topic four is a discussion about the eligible use of the local coronavirus recovery funds. I see Daryl on. Daryl, I assume you're on to participate in this discussion?
Yeah, I just want to listen in. I apologize for not being there, but just wanted to get a heads up. I know you're going to meet with the rest of the Finance Committee on the 28th at your next meeting, but just feeling a little out of touch, so trying to figure out what you guys are thinking about with this, that's all.
Yeah, we haven't had discussions yet, so there's, you're not out of touch at all. Someone just joined the meeting. I want to make sure it isn't Claudia. Claudia, who is G. on the meeting? Is that Claudia?
No. Claudia is just the other.
Oh, okay. Okay, so G. is just someone joining, okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I was just going to say, so if people are sort of wondering what we're discussing as far as the coronavirus fiscal recovery fund, it's another round of funding that the government has given to cities and towns, and so, separate from the CARES Act money that we received last year, fiscal year.
Under the new act, the American Rescue Plan Act that the President...
Right. So the town will be receiving in the $300,000 range. And so one of the, one of the charges of those funds is, it of course has to have something to do with coronavirus or, you know, COVID-related.
Or recovery, right.
Whether it's infrastructure, recovery, that type of thing. And that's what we're discussing, or we will be discussing in a couple of weeks with the Finance Committee, to see what projects we have in mind that think that we can use that funding for.
Because there's a somewhat narrow scope to it.
Yes.
It's not just, you know, it's, it's a lot of money, but it's not as if you can use it for, there's a, there's a pretty narrow scope.
There's five core areas that have been identified.
Right.
And they go into a little bit, and I think in your handout, they go into a little bit of detail as to what qualifies within those four areas.
And, you know, the, the biggest one is water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. And of course, water and sewer, that always, you know, piques our interest. I didn't think it was 300,000. I thought it was one...
There's two, two releases.
It's what, oh, it's, yeah.
But it's how they're distributing the money. Oh, the 315,000, I think, was the...
Initial...
The county reallocation, I believe, if I understood that correctly. And, yes, so on August 17th, okay, on August 17th, the town received 315,734. On June 22nd, which was in FY '21, was the first payment, and that was 170,138. I received those figures from the Treasurer's Office.
But, but those are just installments, and ultimately it'd be about 971,000.
Correct. That is correct. I'm looking at that figure right now. 971,746.
Right.
And right now, we haven't spent a penny of this.
We haven't.
And my other question on this is I was, as I was reading this, it said broadband projects must serve unserved or underd served households and businesses. Do we know from Comcast if there's anybody that's not served on broadband in this town? I'm just curious.
Right. And Ed, you had asked me that, and I still need to get that answer from Comcast. I'm not aware if there's areas, you know, in town that are not served.
I think it's the actual, the infrastructure of it, right? Not connecting...
I think the wastewater power plant doesn't have it, right?
Wastewater treatment plant doesn't have it.
Yeah, we know they don't.
Water treatment plant doesn't have it.
Right.
If I may, but I believe that, I believe that the funding for internet-type connections If I may, but I, I believe that, I believe that the funding for internet-type connections would, would be a large, not a building.
The infrastructure, it's not the connection.
It's the infrastructure, correct.
Right, right.
So, so we have Comcast, we have Verizon, we probably have satellite and different things. So, Hatfield's in a good place as far as that goes, unlike some of the real rural communities that, that for sure need, need help with their, with their broadband. So, I, I agree, there's a certain play, but it's the bigger infrastructure thing.
It's not another, it's not connecting particular users to it.
Right.
So, and, and it's great, and I, I'm grateful for this money, and we'll, you know, I, I'm looking forward to the discussions about the best way to use it. You know, of course, my, like I said, my interest has peaked with the water and sewer, you know, but 971,000 dollars in the water and sewer world isn't a ton of money.
Yeah.
Yeah, it wouldn't necessarily be a super-large project, but.
Do we know if there's any money that the CARES did not cover, that might be covered under this?
None, I know none of this funding can be used for any of the similar, because the guidelines are different. As Tom Mistry said, there's only five categories. I've read about 80 of the 140-something pages, and nothing that was spent for COVID expenditures is allowed under this, because this is the Recovery Act.
We'll spend it one.
So, yeah, wisely and cautiously, and to be as impactful as, as possible. But we will assemble, you know, a, a team to talk about this. And obviously, Daryl, you know, the finance committee will be on that, and capital planning, I think, should be on there, and... So, just so residents know, the money is coming in, and it is, it is a sizable amount of money, and we, you know, there'll be, I'm sure, a lot of discussion about the best way to allocate that. Is that all we needed to talk about on that one, on that item?
Yes, if I, you know, wasn't sure if the, or certain that the board wanted to have or start some discussion about potential uses. But as you had mentioned, water and sewer infrastructure, I've had a conversation with the, the town's engineer regarding the wastewater treatment plant and the wastewater master plan. And as Phil knows, that there are some, there's some leaks that need attention and might qualify. So, those are, you know, there are some potential possibilities.
And would those things already be on the capital plan, Phil, or are they outside of the capital plan?
Probably outside the capital plan.
So then maybe we should have, make sure Phil is on the meeting as well. Daryl, do you have any questions about this, or any comments after?
No, no. This sounds, this all sounds good. I look forward to our discussion on the 28th, and it'll be great to be able to utilize some of these funds to offset some of the costs that the town has incurred in the last, last year and a half. So, that'll be great, so.
Well, I don't see that they can be used to offset particular costs. Has, has the finance committee gotten this memorandum?
I believe I did. I'd just like to add that.
It was in the original email from Marlene.
Okay.
I mean, we can certainly cover, cover current COVID costs.
Current COVID, right.
Yeah, I'd just like to add, so we are using some of the money to compensate the COVID coordinator. I'd like to add that, which is an eligible cost.
Direct COVID-related costs is one of them. Okay.
Well, and what about the school? It's, some of the costs that the school incurred would, would, did they have to pay for any of these that were not grants?
I don't know. We paid for their new ventilation system last year for $200,000. I don't know, I don't know what they incurred this year, but.
Do you mean like the, there's some, I know they're doing like the pooled testing, and are there costs related to that? Is that what you're talking about?
I'm talking about any cost that they may be occurring that are related to COVID. I think it's probably worthwhile having those, you know, the superintendent at least look, look at it. I mean, there's an opportunity there, you know, I would think. I mean, maybe I'm wrong, but.
Well, we should ask them, for sure. We should ask, all departments should be asked if they're having any ongoing COVID expenses. I know that we made a lot of purchases that should last a long time in terms of supplies and cleaning supplies and sanitize, you know, hand sanitizers and masks. I know we really stocked up on that. Am I correct, Bob?
I have over 12,000 masks of different varieties out back.
Yeah, so, so some of that stuff we should have covered with the other.
And the school had also stocked.
And, yeah, the school is very well-stocked, but we should.
Possible way by the 28th that all the departments can submit.
Yeah, absolutely.
What they're, and then we can prioritize from there. You know what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm. You mean any ideas they have, as long as it's in, within the scope of this?
Within the scope of that outline.
That's an excellent idea. That's going to be the best way to figure out how to use it.
Do we know if the schools got a separate COVID-type grant like they did last year? Didn't they get 50 or 60,000?
Near the end of the year, they had acquired a grant.
I, I, I mean, I don't disagree with Daryl. I'm just saying that, you know, we, we might not be privy to what other, you know, another, like, what's coming from school.
The American Rescue Plan into schools.
I'm sorry, Phil.
It's a separate amount, but it just to the schools.
Yeah, I, so that's just something I'm sure that Superintendent Wood would be able to brief us on, all of that. So, he should definitely be present at the meeting.
It'd be nice to have a list of everything, and then you can prioritize, and then you can determine, or the board can determine which projects we should actually.
And Ed had suggested that.
I'm sure this will be a process. This isn't going to be decided on September 28th by any means. There's going to have to be some, some ongoing discussions and then prioritizing. So, how long do we have to spend it?
You know that, I, when I met with the accountant the other day, I intended to ask her, and I didn't, didn't ask her. Wasn't on my list.
Four-year, okay.
Is it really? You know that for sure?
We can get it done long before that, I'm sure.
Oh, okay. Wow, okay.
And the only reason I'm saying that is because a lot of communities, you know, they, they receive a, a large amount. So, if they're going to put something out to bid, it's going to be a process.
Oh, yeah.
Especially a water and sewer project.
You may even need to design things. I mean, you don't know, right?
I have the entire act here, but it doesn't reference a date.
Okay, well, again, we're, we're looking at a starting process, a starting point on the 28th, and, but, you know, Daryl's right. We should get information from, you know, the school about any COVID-related expenses, but from all departments. If, if Bob was going to have anything extra, or anyone here at the town hall.
And, and the other thought was, and I have had some individual conversations about tracking and filing the reports that are required. It's, it's time-consuming.
I can only imagine.
It's, yeah, it's involved. And, you know, so we were thinking that maybe outsourcing or have the accountant do that work. But I understand that Sharon had a conversation with the fire chief too, and the fire chief, you know, is emergency management director, is, is interested or willing to do that as well. And I don't mean to put you on the spot, Bob. But accounting is, the accountant is doing that for other communities as well.
Okay.
So, it's certainly not a problem.
I mean, it's, it's, you're going to get 900,000. It's not, it makes sense to spend a few dollars to have somebody help track it unless we can do it in-house, because you want to make sure it's tracked right. You want to make sure it's reported right. You got all the guidelines and the federal guidelines that have to be followed. There's, I think it's a lot of work, but I, you know, it's just, I, I don't want to dump too much work on.
Well, and that was, yeah, my concern was, you know, will, will the chief have time for that?
Well, and I also think very much like how we set up the, when the initial, you know, COVID money started coming, CARES Act started coming in, we had that initial point of, you know, everything went through one account, so that we didn't end up with a big mess. So, we need to, that should be part of the discussion on the 28th, too.
Yeah, I was going to say, we can.
How to handle it should be part of it.
Efficiently, most efficiently.
Okay, great. Daryl, did you have anything else about this?
Excuse me.
No, that sounds, sounds really good. I'll look forward to hearing what all the other departments come up with, and we'll, we'll see you guys on the 28th.
Yes, indeed. Thanks, Daryl.
Thanks, Daryl.
Okay, so topic five is the certification of a single-voting precinct. We did this. We need to do this, yeah, we, we need to do this again.
Yeah, I apologize. I've gotten an email regarding this, telling me that the select board was going to have to take a vote to be a single precinct. So, I was trying to be efficient and hop right on it, and had you guys vote, and we looked up what happened 10 years ago. And then I got another email going, oh, and by the way, their vote is supposed to say, which was more than.
So, it's just correcting what we already did?
It's just correcting what you already did. You were also supposed to be approving the plan that they submitted. Most places will have a plan that has, yeah, that has several precincts in it. And then, then the board approves where the precinct lines are. This precinct line hasn't changed since 1845.
Right.
Something to be said for consistency.
I mean, it's, it's completely appropriate to just have one precinct in Hatfield.
And you're also approving, they sent me a data block survey, data block information sheet, which is the culmination of all the census work that was done for 2020.
This is this chart with the blue?
Correct, yes. And so, that shows you, breaks it down by ethnic groups, breaks it down, and all those pre, all those block numbers are associated with another map that I worked with two years ago in the beginning of the 2020 census, trying to identify how many people are in those certain blocks. Well, not only do they take my information, but then they also do their own census work that people fill out their census form and the door-to-door, because I had to sign affidavits, and anybody that worked on this had to sign affidavits, that none of the information that was received was to be shared with anybody. It was just my office and whoever worked on it and the Census Bureau. Because their whole thing is to find every possible person and count every possible person. Well, even in Hatfield, there are people that I don't even know are living here, because they don't register to vote, they are squirreled away somewhere, and I don't have any information on them. But they go beyond and try to find these people, and so you're.
You just have a name and an address.
Right.
And that's it.
Yeah, and they're, so they're approving this. You're approving that, but that's what they've come up with, so, you know, and it's pretty consistent. The, the population on here is 3,352. The population in Hatfield changes every day, so people come, people go, but that's what they're coming up with, which is pretty consistent with, you know, what, what we've had. We're only one precinct, and what else are you, oh, and the legal description. Well, I looked and looked and looked, couldn't find a legal description of the town of Hatfield, except the one where we went incorporated, and then we sold some property, conveyed some property to Williamsburg. So, they sent me what they used 10 years ago. So, you're approving that as well, which again, they couldn't find anything either, because they're taking it from Wikipedia, so. So, yeah, so we're just kind of redoing what we did and expanding it a little to, you know, accept the plan, the block data report, the legal description supplied by the Secretary of State's Office and the Local Election District's Review Commission.
You know, it's kind of interesting. It's short. I'm going to, can I read, I'm going to read this description.
Sure.
It says, "Hatfield is located on the west bank of the Connecticut River at the mouth of the Mill River, 25 miles north of Springfield and about 100 miles west of Boston. It is bordered to the west by Horse Mountain, a New England granite glacial remnant, to the north by the town of Waitley, and to the south by a bend in the Connecticut River and North Hampton, Massachusetts. According to the United Census Bureau, the town has a total of 16.8 square miles, of which 16.0 square miles of its land and 0.8 square miles of it is water." That's pretty, that's interesting.
The second page is actually the original description from when they were, when we were incorporated and the granted, the incorporation, and it tells, but those boundaries have been lessened because some land was.
Williamsburg.
Williamsburg, some land, well, first, some land, apparently Waitley was part of it originally, and then Williamsburg, conveyance, but everything's been pretty much the same since then.
Okay, so we can just take this simple, make this motion and take this vote?
Yes. I suppose you might as well rescind the last vote, maybe?
Okay.
I move that the town of Hatfield remain a single precinct town, and that we accept the plan, block data report, and legal description supplied by the Secretary of State's Office, Local Election District's Review Commission.
Second.
A motion made in second, all those, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And we.
I'll make a motion to rescind the vote of the Board of Selectment in August for the one precinct.
And I'll second that.
A motion made in second. Any further discussion?
No, no.
All those in favor?
Aye. Thanks for all the input, Lydia.
You're welcome.
A lot of work to do.
So, if you could sign that, that's similar, considering when we were doing this 10 years ago. What a project. And then this one is the one having to do with the plane.
Nothing's easy.
That was easy.
It was, wasn't it? Why do you call it work?
Right, there you go. I like that.
Okay, so Lydia, is that once we're signed, you're good?
I think I'm good. All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. So, our next agenda item is a one-day special alcoholic permit for the food bank of Western Massachusetts. I'm assuming you're Cheyenne?
Yes.
Thanks for waiting patiently through all those fascinating agenda items. Yep, and so Cheyenne, it looks like you're having an event to, as a fundraiser for the food bank?
This is a, you know, Will Like for Food event.
Right, right, okay. And that's on September 26th. It's a daytime event?
Yes, it begins at 7:00, and the after-party where we would have beer, cider, and wine that's donated from 2:00 to 5:00.
Excellent, okay. Yeah, it doesn't start at 7:00 AM.
Well, 100 miles. Yeah, they're not starting.
Okay. Well, obviously, this is a really great event to, you know, raise funds for a really great organization, so.
Yeah, we're excited to be live again, get some folks in person, so.
Yeah, and this is, we've done this before. I don't have any questions. It looks like everything's in order here. So, did you have any questions? Oops, sorry, that's my phone.
I don't. So, I will, I will make a motion to approve the one-day special alcoholic permit to the food bank of Western Massachusetts for the event on September 26th.
I'll second that.
A motion made in second. Any further discussion?
No, good luck.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good luck. Thanks for doing what you do. Thanks for doing it here in Hatfield.
Thanks, Cheyenne.
Okay, DPW report. Phil, join us up at the mic.
So, the first item is DPW Union. I'm really a little lost at what this is about.
So, that is, I'll just, again, that, that is there as a result of the prior negotiations with the union, and of course, we know that the superintendents have dissolved, correct? The superintendent's has, has dissolved.
And as far as we know, negotiations are not being held until the other issue is resolved.
Correct, correct.
So, is, so, so what's before us right now is really just to approve?
So, there are, so, yeah, the 2% COLA that all employees were, were given by the select board and the finance committee.
Approved by the town.
Approved by the town, at town meeting, put into the budgets. The 2% COLA that was added to the highway department was put there as a placeholder pending negotiations. So, now with unit, I'm not sure if they were unit B or unit A, B, that's right, okay, the superintendents are no longer, they're not negotiating a contract. So, we wanted to make sure that we, we made good and implemented the 2% COLA.
Yes, we're treating them as non-union employees.
Correct, correct, yes.
And I would also add that this is a, a bulk vote that the select board usually takes after town meeting to approve the employees who are receiving, setting the pay rate, and we hadn't done that for these two employees.
Correct.
It's what this is all boiling down to.
Right, normally it would have been part, well. Right, normally, it would have been part, well, actually, they've been part of the union for some time, and that's always been voted separate from the other employees' list. And just, you know, conversations with the Treasurer's Office, the Treasurer's Office cannot implement or change pay rates without authorization.
Yeah, I guess, it's kind of clean it up type thing.
Correct.
Yeah, that's fine, okay.
So that was just, yeah, and again, union negotiations sort of, yeah, misleading, but just to update.
So is this, do we need a vote, a positive vote, or is this an update?
For the new pay rates, yeah, just signing, actually, the, I guess you did forms here, I see, Phil, for, for those.
So it's just allowing the two employees to receive the 2%?
Oh, that's not filled in.
Town employee increase that everybody else has gotten, other than?
I think the Treasurer's Office would be satisfied if that form is signed.
Okay.
I have the form here.
Yeah, but I don't see, I just see the name on them, but that's it, yeah, just the name, doesn't have the pay rate, oh, but you're atta, oh, I see, it's in a different place, but you're attaching the memo anyway, all set, yeah.
Can I just backtrack, Karen, I just pulled out the signature file because I knew these would be in there, where do I, do I sign at the bottom here for the liquor license? Where it says approved or denied?
Yes, and then what to do is just?
Yeah, receive.
Scratch out the denied.
Okay, just say approved?
And yes.
And sign on that line?
Yes.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt there. So we just need, we need to take, do we take a vote on these, or they were, they would be, they would have been included in that mass vote, because?
But it's after the fact, so if you want to take a vote, I mean, I would take a vote.
Make a motion to approve the 2% salary increases presented.
Second.
A motion made in second, any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I think we can probably move on to the discussion of the water and sewer rates while we get our paperwork done.
So Marlene was kind enough to reach out to Dave Prickett and company about the water and sewer rates, as his recommendation is in front of you, that was discussed with the master plan, you know, for the 5%, so I guess.
Sorry?
Do you have this, Phil?
I don't have a copy.
Don't have it here, you can take this copy if you'd like. So when we met with, when Dave Prickett presented to the town, to the Select Board of the town, back in, I think it was February, right, January, Feb, January, it was in January earlier this year, he had, had recommended a 5% increase for water, 25% for sewer, and then we needed to make sure that we're covering our operational costs, which water and sewer were running into deficits, so they did an analysis, the report, you know, determined that we're, we're not covering our expenditures, which?
We knew.
Yeah, we knew, and then looking at, at our revenues, and then also, you know, it's important to be able to, for the town, to qualify for, for grants, and if you're not able to cover your operational expenses, it would sort of put us in a position where we wouldn't qualify, it would be very difficult to...
And as I recall, last year, we started taking the steps we needed to take to incrementally get to that.
Right, the board voted, we had a public hearing, the board voted to increase the rates as recommended in the report, and there was also a recommendation to continue to increase the rates in FY '22 and '23, you know, we haven't revisited that, you know, in a while, and so in order to do that, you know, I wanted to make sure that we, we had started discussions.
I believe that in that discussion with the engineering firm, Dave Prickett, the, what came forward was exactly what we're doing, like, the last, the last increase was sort of the bigger one, and then, and then future ones, like now, would be, not that, you know, everything adds up, but it's not as big, of course, as the previous one.
Correct.
And to your point, Marlene, and to the engineering's point, was Hatfield has always been underfunding for water and sewer.
For some time, yeah.
For years.
For the operation of that, those departments.
For the operation of it, and so we're trying to do, we're trying to accomplish two things, we're trying to have those become somewhat self-sufficient, and also, and very important, is we need to meet certain guidelines in order to qualify for grants that we, that might be available, because the USDA, I believe, is who they usually use?
Yes.
Did I say that right? For their grant proposals, wants to make sure that the communities are doing their best, you know, already, in order to then qualify for a grant, so that's part of what all of this comes together. Yeah, that conversation was a while ago, but that, that's what this is about.
So as you remember during that conversation, if the rates weren't raised to what they were when you raised them to 25 and 5, you wouldn't even qualify for the USDA.
Correct.
Right, right.
Right, we wouldn't qualify, and it's one of these things where you're damned if you do, and you're damned if you don't, because if you don't jack up a little bit each time to cover your costs, then in a couple of years, you got to do a big increase, and that's what happened with us on the last time. You had to do a big increase because we never covered the cost, and it was never bumped up slowly, so.
Dave Prickett's group did analyze, you know, going forward, what it should be, you know, and, you know, that's probably right there in the middle somewhere with the 5% that he feels is com, to be comfortable with, you know, keep the qualification with the USDA grant, as well as keeping the operating budget sufficient under what the fee rates are.
You'd really be shooting yourself in the foot if you didn't keep pace so that you were able to qualify for those grants, I mean.
Exactly. When I started here, where there was no increase in water and sewer for five years, so that, now you're playing catch-up.
Right, that's exactly what's happening now.
Because they were increasing, I mean, that's exactly what happened.
So this is just for discussion purposes, we'll need to set a hearing?
A public hearing, so I just wanted to say that, you know, on the water, so if there was a 5% increase on water, that would be an additional 49 cents per 100 cubic feet, and then on the sewer, we'd be looking at an increase of 93 cents.
And for the average user, when, I think when we get to the hearing point, we'd like some information for the average user, so the townspeople can know what we're talking about, because to most people, that rate per cubic foot really means nothing to them, right?
They want to hear what the bottom line, how much your bill's worth.
Right.
Right, exactly, roughly what you can expect on average usage, yeah.
And percentages oftentimes sound high, they certainly did last time, but when you broke it down, you know, it wasn't horrible, but it was more expensive than we were used to, so, so I think the bottom line, Phil and I talked about this, Marlene and I did as well, it's ultimately, all of us, right, as rate payers, want to know, what's it going to cost me? Regardless, you can call whatever percentage you want, you can call whatever cubic feet you want, I just want to know ultimately, approximately, how much is my bill going up? I think to Diana's point, that's what we'll need to be able to, at a public hearing, be able to have that conversation.
Yeah, that's, townspeople should have that information, as best we can, I mean, it's all, right.
It's a price of doing business, you know, I mean, what can you do?
And, and the, and the cost of having nice perks, like town water and town sewer.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, and maybe, you know, maybe there's areas you look at, there are no, for the rescue plan to put in a sewer somewhere that is affordable, you know, who knows?
That would be great, to expand the system.
Phil, are there areas in town that do not have town water?
Very few, yeah, I think there's 1380 households that have water, but the sewer only has 700 in chains, so, you know.
Right.
But, you know, it's the cost, it's the cost, I mean, we have the capacity at the plant, it's just the cost of putting the pipes in the ground, and then hoping everybody hooks up, that's the other thing, you know, people with, you know, I mean, we did the Straits Road, and no one's hooked up, because people, septics haven't failed.
Well, you not, you didn't do all of Straits Road, you did a little part of it.
It's a section, right.
Sorry, feeling a little left out there, but, yeah, yeah.
Because there's nothing that mandates you to hook up, you know.
Yeah, that's surprising, boy, I would hook up if I had the chance, but.
You know, in my past employment, if the sewer line went by your house, you paid a $5,000 charge whether you hooked up or not, just because it went by the house.
Wow.
Well, they tried to recoup some money, and, you know, up the value of your home.
True, that's true, it does, whether you're hooked up or not, the fact that it's there, yeah.
Right.
Okay, well, you know, I'll for, for, you know, a public hearing discussion, so how soon would we want to be doing that, like, the next meeting, or in a?
For September 28th.
That's ample time, is enough time to get notices out?
So just a couple updates while I'm here, you know, West Street's going well, we did the final connection into the water by the bridge there, so, you know, it was new hooking into old, so of course, there's problems, but, you know, it's all done now, it's paved. I know we had some complaints, you know, from people that the road's bumpy, the road's going to be milled and shimmed, they're trying to do a piece of the sewer, and if they can do that, and then hold the road for 30 days, from the time that the last pipe goes in, they can mill it and finally pave that portion, so I think that's what he's looking to do. It depends on how the sewer goes, but all the, most of the water, I think there's only maybe one more connection that has to be done, when they ended by USA Waste, and the rest is at, is 12-inch main from there to Chestnut Street, but they're not going to do that, because it's going to be in the way of the sewer, so they're going to wait and just do that piece last with the water, but the rest of the water that we put the 8-inch main in is done.
And this?
All the services are done.
The services are done, but the sewer line is?
Now we're going to start the sewer line.
Start the sewer line.
Yeah, yeah.
And they're thinking this will be done this season?
No, they, we just filed, we filed a while ago for an extension through Mass DOT for, until August 2022, so they accepted the, you know, the extension, so hopefully.
So will it basically sit like it is now, until spring?
No, they're going, they have to shim the road smooth, I mean, that's one of the...
It is bumpy?
Yeah, you know, all the cross stitches from the, you know, from the water services, but, you know, DOT is going to mandate that they do something, so it won't be like that for the winter, that I can see.
Okay.
And the other thing is that I, my update, I hope you didn't fall off the chair with the price of salt this year, you know, it went from $49 to $71, so 45% increase, which is unheard of, but it is what it is.
So Phil, I just have a question, are we going to need to make a second request to the state to amend our contract for that?
I'm going to have to talk to CI about that.
Yeah.
You know, about that extension, because I know that, you know, with Gilher, with the contractor, you know, he, we, we put it in probably a good six weeks, eight weeks ago for to get the extension, because he was a little worried that he's not, you know, he's not going to finish, because we added the water to that, so.
Yeah, so earlier this year, we, we filed an amendment, I had to have a meeting, it was held remotely with, with the Mass Works Office.
Right, so we will be touching base with Scott Simpson and Michael about it.
Okay. And matter of fact, I have a report due to Mass Works the end of this month, so it would be good to communicate that, to make sure it would be necessary.
I've been talking to Scott on a weekly basis, so I'll talk to him.
Okay.
Anything else?
No, sounds good. Lots of stuff going on.
Are you, I'm assuming you're getting ready for winter and thinking about that?
Do that.
It's not even fall, yes, yes, we are, well, like I said, I mean, last year's bid was $49, so it's up, October 14th or something, the bid is up, so we ordered 200 ton of salt to fill the shed under the $49.
Yeah.
You know, we moved some stuff around so we can jam it in there, and, you know, because next year, you're going to be paying 71, so.
So you bought how many, how many?
200 ton.
And how many do you typically use in a winter?
Over 1,000.
Yeah, so.
But, you know, but that's a room, I mean, we had some from last year left over in there, we figured we could jam the 200 in there, and we did, so, it hasn't come yet, but it's ordered, so we're going to get the $49 price.
Yeah, okay, well, thank you, Phil.
Yeah, good job.
Marlene?
Um, yeah, I had just, you know, wanted to mention the firefighter's assistant grant that Senator Warren's office had, had called, the office to let the town know that the Fire Department's application had been approved, and so, you know, we were, we were just very excited to get this news last week, and I can't be, I'm so proud of the Fire Department, but anyway, I'll move on here.
It's a nice win.
It is, it is.
It's a lot of money, it's a lot of money.
It is, and, and I know he put a lot of work into that application.
He did, I forget, it was something like 80, something pages or something, you know, he was telling me back when he was preparing it.
Mm-hmm.
A lot, okay.
A financial update, the Treasurer and I met with the accountant last week, Lori Del Rio was on site last Friday, Lori's working with, with the Assessors Office, the Community Preservation, CP1, will be filed tomorrow with the Department of Revenue, and the accountant is reconciling FY '21. She expects to have her submission balance sheet and schedule of indebtedness, all those, those reports that are required to close out FY '21, she's looking at the end of September, early October. I reached out to the auditor and were asking if he might be able to pencil Hatfield in for an audit the end of October, early November.
Wow.
So, but Lori had said that she may be able to give us an estimate, free cash estimate, you know.
Of the correct year, even.
Of the current year, yeah.
Yeah, wow, I know.
Ed, you cracked me up, but it's true.
So the Treasurer's Office is, is completely reconciled to her books, and now Lori is reconciling to the Treasurer's.
As it should be, good job.
Well, that's great, it's, that's great, so kudos, kudos to the Treasurer's Office and, and obviously, the accountant and the Lancer Heath have been really great.
Is in touch, communicating with the school and reconciling, so everything is, is working very well, the way it should be.
Right, yep, nice.
Okay.
Also, for the board's consideration, the board has, we've had previous discussions regarding vehicle use, the DOR's commuting rule, and I'm asking the board to consider accepting this proposed policy regarding vehicle use, and I understand, speaking with the accountant, that it, it should be, you know, the effective date we have here, it, I, I don't know that, for me, anyway, I don't know that it makes a big difference, but the accountant feels that it is important.
You know, the, the important thing, so, we've had meetings about this, and I'm sure people at home recall some of those, certainly the board does.
Memorable ones, yes.
Memorable ones, but the, the town has never had an official vehicle use policy, it's sort of been left up to interpretation, let's say, so, so this, this puts that, if this gets accepted, this puts a policy into place, so that there's no questions going forward as to what IRS valuation rule or, you know, should be used, so, so that's what, that's what this is doing, it's finally.
Right, the purpose is to determine evaluation of the vehicle that is used by the employee.
Right, which employees pay, do pay taxation, you know, are taxed on using a town vehicle, just so people understand that.
That's right.
So you're looking for a vote?
So I'm looking for the board to vote to approve the policy, and if you're comfortable, at the bottom of that draft, it references example evaluation calculation, so the board could change the days per year if you want to, but we took... But we took, you know, talking with the accountant, we used 261 workdays per year less two weeks paid time off. So the total commuting days would be 251. So that would be based on a person that works full-time. We do have employees that work part-time that, that use a town vehicle at the school. Initially, I was thinking that we would amend our HR policies and, and add this. The, the town's HR policies does not include, excludes the school. So I just wanted to make sure the board understood that. So I, I changed how I had initially proposed this. And so it wouldn't not be included, would not, the language would not be added to the HR policy. It would be a standalone.
Standalone policy. So may I ask a question? So on the bottom, you just, you have an example of the valuation, like, and you just went over 261. So ultimately, we just have the employee, though, say, I really worked 240 days? Or I worked, you know, a part-time employee works a hundred. I mean, this, this, this is an example, not, so we, but we go with what the real number of days worked.
That's reported. The days commuted is reported.
Right. And I believe I added in here. Yes, I did. Workday shall be determined based on employment status in a monthly log submitted. So the employee would have to document the days that they commuted. And therefore you use those number of days.
I just wanted, thank you for clarifying. I just, I assumed that's what it was because it says example. I just wanted to make sure.
It is.
Okay. Because it could be more.
Or less, right.
If it's someone who ends up getting called in on a weekend or whatever, okay?
But just so the, and this is also helpful for the employee to understand how the calculation works.
Okay. Okay.
I don't have an issue with it.
So I, so you want, you need a motion to accept the policy or approve it?
Please, a motion to accept it.
Okay, so I will make a motion to approve the calculation for the valuation of tax purposes using, and I'm using air quotes here, commuting rule, IRS Publication 15-B, Employer's Tax Guide to Fringe Benefits. And to have this effective as of January 1st, 2020.
I second that.
A motion made and seconded. Any further discussion?
No. Yes, I'm, I'm sorry.
I would just pipe in that I think, you know, we obviously need to respect the fact that we contractually have these obligations. But I would, I would personally never want to enter a new contract with a new employee that gives this benefit. Just want to go on record as saying that. Sorry, go ahead.
I, I just wanted to take a moment to, getting back to my earlier comments, there's a lot of discussion over the last few months. And ultimately, I want to thank the treasurer's office, the accountant's office, the auditor's office, Marlene in particular, for coordinating a lot of this. Because we just, everybody just needed to have a conversation and get on the same page. Whatever that page was, we just needed to come together and have the conversation. And that ultimately happened. And here we are, finally with a way forward. And finally, a policy for the town of Hatfield.
Yeah.
It was kind of a lot to lead through.
Thank you, everybody. Yeah.
Everybody.
We got there.
We got there.
As we usually do.
Right. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, hazard mitigation plan update. And as you know, the group, there's a group, town, town employees, fire chief, police chief, DPW, myself. We've been working with a consultant at PVPC Pioneer Valley Planning Commission on updating the town's current hazard mitigation plan. And so we have pretty much finalized that plan. And the next step is to have a second public meeting at a select board meeting. And we're looking at, I believe, October 18th to be our second meeting in October. But it reminds me, I want to have a discussion with, with the board later about the meeting dates.
About meetings, yeah.
But we can change that if the 18th is not going to work. But anyway, we will have a second public meeting. And, and really, that's just an opportunity for folks to, you know, weigh in and provide comments to the town. And then we will finalize that plan for the board to vote. And then it will be submitted to, to MEMA and then also to, well, MEMA is a state agency, but then it goes to another state agency for final approval.
Well, I know this has been a lot of work.
Yes.
You know, it, it is, we're going through the existing plan, but at least we weren't creating it, you know. We're not creating the plan. Some communities are just putting a plan together.
Right.
But it's, it's certainly a helpful tool. And it's good to have DPW and Fire involved in these discussions because they contribute to quite a bit of that plan.
Right. No, it's, it's important to do, but it has been a process and you stayed, you know, on top of it in diligent. I thank you for that.
Just like to add, for what it's worth, previously when the hazard mitigation plan was previous, it was creating, or maybe that was an update too. It was the Emergency Management Committee, and that was a lengthy process. I think due to the number of people on the committee. And I just felt that, you know, we just need our, our key personnel, the fire chief, emergency management director, DPW director, police. And Board of Health was also involved and contributed to these meetings. And they went very smoothly.
Great.
They lasted about an hour and a half, and I think we've had five or six, six meetings, so.
It's still a lot. So thank you for doing that.
You're welcome. Hiking trail, Horse Mountain. Just want to make sure, as the board knows, that Dennison and Dawn Moran offered some time ago, some of their property, to make it accessible to the existing trail that, you know, Open Space has been working on up on, on Horse Mountain. And just how much the town appreciates them making their property available. This property runs south to north on east side, on the east side of Horse Mountain. And, and I know Brian has had some communications with members of the Open Space Committee. And we're still working out a memorandum of agreement with the Morans. But the board has, the board sent them a thank you letter.
They did thank you. And I don't know if the Morans watched the meeting or the Open Space. The thank you note was overdue to be sent, quite honestly. And, and there's a myriad of reasons for that. Some good, maybe, you know, I, I don't know. It wasn't intentional. That, that's not how this board operates or our town administrator. I, I think, as Marlene just alluded to, we're, we're still waiting for some legal type things in the background. And I think part of our feeling at, at one point was, well, let's see how that plays out if everyone's on board with it. But so anyhow, I, even though it's overdue, it certainly should not diminish the fact of how kind and generous the Morans have been. And so I would just like to, hopefully they're watching, I'd like to thank them and apologizing for the delay and that thank you note getting out. But we, as the board, and of course, the townspeople who benefit from it appreciate everything you've done. So I just wanted to go on record stating that.
Absolutely.
Yeah, we thank them very much. Is that all you had, or did you want to speak to this road race?
Well, actually, I had, was going to, I had thought that I would hear from the, the police chief prior to finalizing the meeting agenda and the, not the fire chief, the police chief. And he popped into my office yesterday. And I, I was aware that the gentleman that's organizing this race next year, and I think it's for April, right? Yeah, April of 2022. And he, they were having a telephone conference with the, he was having a telephone conference with the fire chief and police chief last week, and they worked out the details. Police chief stopped in my office yesterday morning and said he doesn't have any concerns and very little know, details will be used, maybe one or two officers, you know, for, for detail work. But he doesn't have any concerns and.
So this is a cycling race that'll be taking place in Hatfield. Does it, doesn't say where, but it's not until April of 2022?
Right. And they were just looking for approval from, from the town to hold this race.
Now, was this the same race we discussed at a prior meeting that went through Whately? And the question was, were they?
It would be going through Whately.
Did they talk to Whately? I mean, I thought this race went from Hatfield through Whately and back to Hatfield.
I believe it does go through some other towns.
I don't see the route on here.
It doesn't.
I do believe it's the same one, though, Ed. That's the same question you had when we had last time.
Right.
But at that time.
We had questions about, you know, how that would work.
At that time, Chief DeKoschak, I don't think was aware of this or hadn't been contacted yet.
He hadn't been contacted. I had been told that he had been, that he had already talked to this gentleman. I was talking to, had talked to the police chief, but he had not talked to the police chief.
Right.
Wouldn't it be appropriate for the organizer of this race to come to a meeting to talk about the?
And I'm sure he'd be glad to.
Okay, and to talk about the, the route, because it'd be nice for townspeople to know that, you know.
It bothers me that they're already set up a race and they haven't had our approvals. You know what I'm saying?
Well, and this is, this is just a proposal.
Yeah, I don't think.
Taking registrations, they're already accepting registrations.
I don't know if they are. I think this is just a draft.
I, I believe it is a draft, yeah. This gentleman is just trying to coordinate the whole race well in advance of the event.
I would like to have the organizer in.
He knows, he is aware, the gentleman I've been communicating with is aware that the board has not approved this yet.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I'd love to hear about it. I think it'd be nice to have it come through Hatfield. But residents should certainly, you know, we should have an opportunity to make sure residents know from a safety standpoint for the cyclists, you know, as well as just people knowing when it's going to happen, exactly where it's going to go.
Will it be marked out?
Okay, so are you all set, Marlene?
I am.
And the last is just under Continued Old Business, and it's the discussion of town hall use.
I sort of, I sort of asked for this.
You know, here we are again.
This wasn't about the museum. What I had requested was, we should have a discussion before we discuss the museum about what the town's needs are. And I have like four categories of things such as whichever use is used on the second floor, the building inspector said it would have to have a handicap bathroom, no matter what we used it for. Number two, I think a discussion has to be done about the TV studio. He's operating, John's operating in a closet, and he can't operate at the school. So I think the discussion is, where do we put John? And what's the most best place? The third discussion, there's all these files that are downstairs and upstairs, and we worry about the 100-year flood. If the flood comes in, those files are all be ruined. So what do we do with that? And the fourth thing on the, on the building is meeting space. I mean, if, if we're looking at more meetings being broadcast on TV right now, this is the only place that it can happen unless we determine that we set up remote sites. And, but we would have to have a discussion with John and what the equipment needs would be and if that's even possible, or whether if it's upstairs or whatever. I mean, things like that. So, I mean, because right now, our last meeting in here, we had like 10 people and the place was packed. So, and then right now, if we're meeting here, the school committee can't, planning, no, it can't. They, they have to meet elsewhere. And then if they meet elsewhere, they're not broadcast. So, I mean, I think it's important to, before we even get to the museum, to discuss what direction do we want to go in? And what can the town afford, or what do we want to put on the agenda to bring up? Because right now, as far as this building, COA is, is wonderful. It's great down there. We, this building's finally handicap accessible. So the last unknown is the third floor. If it becomes a museum, what would be the cost and, and how the town? And then if that becomes a museum, how do we deal with all these other issues? So that's what this agenda was supposed to be. It wasn't really about the museum. It was about discussing the building needs. And then also meeting with the museum folks to discuss which direction is the best direction to go in, so.
I appreciate hearing and knowing what other uses. To me, that's, that's useful to me is knowing what, what else you're thinking about.
So I had an idea that I had talked to Marlene about that might help with some of these things. So we have, Phil's office is empty. You're going to move over there. Which, so Marlene's office would now be big enough to have meetings in, not necessarily when you weren't there, but, you know, like our executive sessions could be comfortably held in there and that sort of thing. So now you have, my thought was, if your office is empty, I sort of feel like Karen and Gerard are expected to work in this little tiny space. I wouldn't particularly like that. I think it would be disruptive and, you know, that sort of thing. So my thought was, what if each of them gets an office, but it's also got a secondary purpose? And I thought if, if John, if, because your office is quite large, right?
My current office?
Your current office is large enough that maybe with a temporary divider, I'm not suggesting permanent walls or anything like that, but, you know, a divider. So John's, would that work? No. Why?
Oh.
I want to move the broadcast equipment from the school over here. And that means there'll be a connection and it will be computers running 24 hours a day, seven days a week, all year long.
But why, so why couldn't that happen?
I'll be racked with equipment. Be like the server room.
Okay. So that couldn't be in like half of, like, Marlene's office? Oh, it's not quiet?
Yeah.
Oh.
It's got environmental controls.
Okay.
Well, but it's got a can over, right. It's got the fans.
It's got a rack of equipment with three different things, all the fans going on at the same time.
Okay, so, so, I mean, when I was on the select board before, our meetings were at the school.
That's right, but the school was connected to the studio in the back.
It's not anymore. Okay.
The library's not going to do some of the meetings anymore.
Right, I know. Okay. Okay.
Yeah, he got moved out.
That connection was broken.
Oh, I didn't realize that. Well, I still think there's some merits to having them each have their own space. And you're talking about the files that need to be brought up. So files could be brought up. Those office spaces are large enough that there could be some file space, some storage in there, but also have enough working space for each of them. And then I was thinking, one, they could share the space maybe with the, it, there could be dividers, but it could be the break room. Although if this is working fine, do people come and eat their lunch here?
We haven't used that table back there because it, we need to, yeah.
Well, I mean, but we could get a new table.
But some people do. Once in a while, somebody might come in here and use, use the table here.
What do people generally do for any kind of break space? They just don't?
They don't have a break room.
They don't. Just, yeah.
Okay.
I don't, I don't let anybody take a break. No kidding?
I mean, but this space would be available if the, if the furniture, if the table wasn't broken.
Oh, yeah.
People could come in here for, for a little peace and quiet or to share lunch with colleagues.
And honestly, the employees would be so grateful if there was a small room, just to, you know, sometimes now and then somebody wants to make a personal call or take care of a personal business on their break.
They can come in here, no?
They could, yeah. Although reception, cell phone reception's not the best in here. But it would be nice just to, and I think it's healthy to step away from your, your desk, your office space for a little while and just, you know.
I guess my point is putting that in with the, with one of their office spaces isn't really the best idea. But being able to use this, because during the day, this room isn't, right, used often for meetings. I mean, there is some times in the morning or whatever.
Yeah. Yeah. If it's used anytime, it's usually mornings.
I don't know, that was my thought, that that would solve the storage problem for the files. And it would, and I don't know, Karen, how you feel about being in that small space. But I just feel like we have these two spaces. Why would we not?
Yeah, it's sort of, they're sort of in a.
Unless you would want a whole one for what you need to do. Would, if you had a whole one?
A whole, one of those whole offices. I would bring all the, the entire control room and all the cameras and everything over here. I would be completely out of the school. I would be completely out of the school.
But that, but that wouldn't be, if it was in its own office with a door, you don't think that the sound would be disruptive to the offices on either side? That's a thought too. Would that solve your problems?
It would.
May I?
Of course.
So, so I agree with what Ed had said in the beginning, which is, I think we need to kind of get a plan going. But I, I think, I would suggest that the next steps are to get the employees together to sit down or somehow ask, what do you need? You know what I mean? I mean, let's get the employees who work here day in and day out, let's get them set up with what we think, including John, by the way, including what we think is best. I mean, because if they sit down together, something could come up where it's like, hey, okay, nobody really needs that room because we're going to do X, Y, Z. I would suggest or recommend that. Doesn't mean everyone's going to get what they want, but at least everyone's going to hear the same thing and sit there and understand one another's needs. Once we know what our day-to-day employees need, I think that's going to tell us what we have available for space beyond that. That's just my suggestion. I think the people who are here day in and day out, that, that's probably who we should go to first to hear from.
I would agree.
And then take, kind of take it from there.
And I expect that the priority is space for storing files. We just don't have enough space in town hall to store those files. We have, you know, filing cabinets, boxes stored downstairs, which is not the best place. They need to be on higher ground.
So, and, and those are the kinds of things that are going to guide us to the future, right? I mean, we've got to take care of records and things that date back hundreds of years.
It came up during our hazard mitigation plan, storing files.
So, and so, and I think if you have different people in the same room, even if it's to talk about, let's just say, the record, someone who you wouldn't necessarily, you know, might have some input that you just, if they weren't part of that conversation, you'd never hear from them, you know what I mean? So if everyone's together, maybe there's an idea out there or a thought or what have you.
You know, we have the room with the copier, right?
Small, with mailboxes in there and the copier.
The mailboxes. I mean, I wonder is that, would that space be big enough for what John needs?
No.
No?
I can redesign. You know, maybe we just need, you know, I think if we had a schematic, if one exists, her floor, and kind of saw it and how it is now, and how many square feet, I mean, and then kind of take it from there to say, well, you know, my desk doesn't need to be humongous, or I do need a humongous desk, I mean, whatever it may be. And that's going to help us fill the spaces.
They may have some good suggestions about places where there's a lot, like the assessor's office has a lot of space with just one person in there, but then there's other spaces that are smaller that have two people. I mean, Sharon's office is a lot of people in that small space at times. I, I wouldn't, I personally wouldn't work that well that way. That's myself, some, maybe some people love it. But I just, you know, I think that's a good suggestion as the people who are.
It's a starting point and then that's.
Then that will lead us to the discussion about the upstairs and meeting space. And you, you make a good point about, you know, we do want to make sure that particularly school committee, our meetings and planning board meetings are televised, but it doesn't seem, I mean, I, it doesn't seem we've ever had conflicts with those things. In other words, jockeying for this space at the same time, have we? That I just haven't been aware of or?
No.
I mean, it seems to be a little, you know, sort of a flow and we manage and.
Right. Well, I would agree. And I, I think that we, we need, we need the space on this floor for sure to be probably utilized a little more efficiently with whatever that little redesign is. And then whatever case needs to be made for whatever, for upstairs, there's got to be a case made for it, right? So I, I agree with you because I actually had those comments with Marlene, like how often is it double booked or is it a problem for people and?
What we don't want is large spaces sitting around unused.
Correct.
Because we think we need two spaces for these larger meetings and they just don't ever get used.
Right.
It would be so inefficient and counterproductive, so.
You know, lots of places.
I think this is actually pretty easy to solve.
Yeah, I think it is too. We just need to get the right everybody.
And then we can get to the point where maybe we can make that decision that the upstairs should be for.
Yep.
You know?
I agree. And I think.
One thing that's a given for the upstairs is if we're going to use it, no matter what we're using for, it has to be a handicap bathroom. So, I mean, that's, that's a, that's a, you know, a given.
Well, yeah.
So.
And so that, that does not exist on the capital plan currently.
It should be.
Should be.
Because I think that's like 50 grand right there. That's what I'm hearing.
Really?
Yeah, it was close to 50.
Yeah.
We, because Phil did some estimating, right? So.
$50,000.
For just a handicap accessible.
Bathroom.
Bathroom.
You have to take the wall down between the kitchen, existing kitchen and the bathroom because there's not enough space for the wheelchair return.
The wheelchair return, yeah.
Then you got to pipe it, got to bring electricity up.
There's electricity in the bathroom.
You have to upgrade the electric up there, there's two plugs.
Yeah.
There's no HVAC system up there. So, I mean, you're talking.
Yeah, the electrical is.
You have to, if you did that, you might.
Regardless of ultimately what the use is upstairs, to your point, the bathroom needs to be done and.
Yeah, but, you know, there's some things that have to be addressed before.
Right. So.
We're getting there, Amy.
Yeah, yeah, no, and I, I agree. I mean, part of this whole discussion with the museum is like, well, you know, it's not happening until, you know, nothing can happen until that's upgraded and, you know, the commission is certainly looking at other things, I think, as a format.
I think it'd be wrong of us if we didn't at least talk about the other stuff because it's, that's important too, to this building. I mean, it's, it's wrong that we don't mention it because if, if we do go with the museum up there, we still are going to have to address this other stuff somehow.
Yeah, let's get it right the first time.
Exactly.
Or try to get it.
So that's why we need a game plan.
You can't just look at today.
Well, that's what I was going to say, our space needs are constantly going to be changing.
You can't look at today because 10 years ago, when they were going to do the whole town hall renovation with the big project, you know, and everybody put their needs and what they thought they needed, it's not the same today as it was right there. You know, we went around even to do these renovations, you know, how much square footage you need, what do you need, what do you need? As you can see, it's changed.
Plus the building coach changed too.
They do.
Yep.
Right.
Well, that's it, we want to make determinations for the, not only now, but for the future to Phil's point, by Amy.
You for coming, Amy.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's very educational. And Amy.
You'll hear that all.
Stop. Okay, so somebody did join, is that, that LS, that's not Claudia, you, that's not. No, Lydia's on twice.
There's somebody else, yeah, LS.
There's an L, somebody that says an L, but I'm just double checking, it's not Claudia. Okay, so I was holding out hope that she would show up at some point, but.
Could you perhaps at your next, either the next one or the one after your department head meeting, maybe just kind of kick this off, like listen, the board would like us, meaning you guys, to sort of start having some conversations.
Oh, that's just, yeah.
I don't know how, I don't know how to kick it off, but.
Yeah, that would be appropriate.
Yeah.
Well, actually, I'm going to, so we have a department head meeting next week, but I, what I was thinking, I'll send out an email in advance of that so people can come prepared for that discussion.
Both their workspace and their storage.
And their storage, yeah.
Yeah, and I know we've been through it before and that ultimately, you know, when we, when the COA finally got refurbished, it was based off of what, the plans that they brought forward, both Jane and Cookie and then Jerry. I mean, it was kind of, we need this, we need a separate office for some private conversation. You know, we, we need to know what, what people need or what they want. And we can certainly try to accommodate that, but we need, we need a guide, right? We, we need the people that need the space, that use the space, they're, they're the experts on what they need. That's who we need to hear from. And we, I would suggest we do our best to accommodate.
You know, when the COA renovation went forward and they did what they brought forth, you moved two offices out of the basement up here.
Yes, understood, right. So that added, you know, right.
You know, that wasn't in the plan for this.
And we have a shared space. So that's what I mean. We, we need to see what, you know, let's sit, let's take a step back, sit down and go through all this, because we want to utilize our space though too.
Is there ability to, and I mean, it's, but maybe a break space or that, that space for employees could be downstairs? Is that possible? Somewhere downstairs? I don't know, just.
Yeah, every, all the space down there is used.
Yeah, it really looks nice. I will say, I, I went to an event.
Well, I was going to say, the old fire chief and the old police chief, but aren't they being used for storage?
Because you have all that, all the stuff for the fire departments down there. As far as the communication, the state communication's still down there.
Right.
And that makes noise.
Yeah, there is equipment in the.
No one can sit in there all day.
Yeah.
Well, we wouldn't expect them to sit in there all day.
The police department's old room.
Oh, you mean for office spacing.
The hammer around here, I'm talking, you know, for a break room, they might be sitting down there all day.
But the police department's old room is used for storage. Right. But you are correct.
Those rooms are, those aren't in good shape.
No, they're not.
But let's, you know, now the rec department's going to need room somewhere because we kicked it out of there. All their stuff's in that storage container and it's two-thirds full of rec department stuff that has to go somewhere.
Yeah, where the, the fire, fire, what do I, what do I call it? The fire system, fire alarm system. It is in the back room now, right? Where there, used to be storage for the rec, yeah.
Marlene, would you consider attending this meeting with the employees?
Sure, I'd be happy to attend.
He's our town space.
The rec committee might be looking at a storage, a portable storage building to come in to lock up all their stuff. I'm not sure.
It has to go somewhere.
Right, it has to go someplace. All the stuff's got to go somewhere.
And regarding a break room, let's get that table fixed or toss it. Get a new one and can we just close that? Can we just close the divider and make that, unless there's a larger meeting happening?
What's the problem being in a room that's bigger for a break room?
Well, there isn't, except if it just, if there's another meeting.
I was just having a conversation with somebody about whether we might be able to salvage that table, Phil, and, and I didn't know if it was somebody who might be able to.
It's the legs, right? So it must be some cross braces or something.
Because it's a good table.
Yeah, well, it's a big, heavy duty one.
Yeah, it's, it's one end of the table.
Just need a couple screws in it.
But it would be nice, you know, because we have the refrigerator here, it'd be nice to close that off.
Yeah.
Yeah, if we don't.
Yeah, I mean, I guess that was.
Help close the curtain.
Yeah, so that would be great. And I, Ed, I would feel good if Ed went to the meetings because he's.
Just let me know what time and you're going to meet and, and actually you can give the department heads a head up, say, we're looking at what your needs are.
Yeah, so we will.
I hope that the department heads would ask their employees as well.
Yes.
Because we want the, we want the employee to, to speak.
Yeah, somebody might have a great idea or something.
So this would be next Thursday, Ed, at 9:30 in the morning? Is that too early?
Well, I need some beauty sleep, but that's okay.
Because his wife, his wife tells him he's a beauty, so.
Okay.
Department heads, I still think you should say it's not just for today.
Right, look to the future, right.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, within, you know, we're, right, we're not going to embark on another big, right.
That's something too often we do is we're dealing with the present and we're not thinking about the future.
Right.
We need to do that.
Right, but.
Got to think of the future.
Yeah. Okay, well, I, you know, I really, I assume we're done with this discussion and I, you know, I don't want to beat a dead horse here, but it is, it is upsetting to me that we did not have an update from our COVID coordinator. Particularly, you know, to me, that's a big part of the duties of this position. This person was on the agenda, they knew they were on the agenda.